This time I call the January meeting of the County Commission to order. We have with us tonight Reverend James James, my pastor at Barton's Crossroads CH Church. It's an annual event for him in January. We're glad to have him. Welcome to leave if you want to, but if you leave while I'm speaking, I'm gonna leave Sunday while you. This time Reverend James, you will come to the podium and Commissioner Henderson will lead us in the pledge and lead us to the plaque.
Lord, as we gather here this evening to conduct the business of this county, first of all, I thank you for the privilege and the honor to stand before our leaders and some of the community, to call upon you for wisdom and for guidance. Lord, it is an opportunity that I hold with deep respect and with gratitude. Now, Lord, we invite you and your presence into this meeting, and I humbly ask, Lord, that we move forward in the year 2025, that you would reveal your will for the progress, the peace, and the prosperity of the great people of this county, shine a light upon our path, on which you've sat before our leaders, and before us all, and guide our steps, that we might walk according to your will and to your way, your divine purpose. I do pray, Lord, especially for our leaders, I pray you'll grant them clarity of thought, wisdom in their decision-making, and unity, Lord, in their actions. May their words and their deeds reflect not only a benefit to the people that they serve, but may all those things be in perfect alignment, God, with your divine will, provide them with knowledge and understanding, that they may understand the challenges before them, and give them a supernatural wisdom that comes from above, not from man, and help them to navigate through the simplicities as well as the complexities, Lord, with grace and discernment. Pray you'll just strengthen their resolve, their diligence in seeking your voice in every decision, and, Lord, in their working, and in their thinking, and their decision-making. I pray that you would give them patience to wait upon your time. Now, Lord, ask your blessings of Mr. Larry Collins, Mr. Stan Tankersley, Mr. Cooper Clyde, Mr. Brian Henderson, and the Chairman of the Board, Mr. Walker Norman. May your hand of guidance, Lord, rest upon them as they lead this county with integrity and purpose, always knowing as a sovereign God, whose eyes is upon and ears is open to all decisions and all conversation. Father, in all that is done here tonight, I pray that your glory will be revealed, and may your blessings abound. And, Lord, I ask these things in all things, in the name of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ. And everybody say amen.
At this time, I'm gonna ask Sheriff Paul Revere. Ahead, you can come with him if y'all want to come up. Come on, Sheriff. As most of you know, Sheriff Revere retired as Lakewood County Sheriff for seven years and several months at the end of the year. And the Board of Commissioners wanted to present a plaque to you showing the appreciation of us, Constitutional Officers, and the people of Lakewood County for your guidance, leadership, and what you did for the years that you were sheriff, but not only that, he was the county's car many, many years before that. He's been a long time friend of mine. We grew up on the same street, two houses between us. We've known each other a long time. I want to present this to you, and it reads, "Presented to Paul C. Revere in recognition and deepest appreciation for your years of dedicated and devoted service as the Sheriff of Lakewood County, September 19, 2017, December 31, 2024." Sheriff, we wish you the very best. I want to give this to you that way. That's something else than anything else. We want you to say out these words.
My mama and dad taught me that if you don't ask anybody to do anything to you, you find something you can do for somebody else. And I've had the privilege for decades through the funeral home, and the school, and the coroner's office, and sheriff's office, to serve the people of this community, whom I love, this community that I love, and I'm grateful for that privilege. And I appreciate the support of this group during my tenure in both those elected positions. I go to congresses, and all I would hear would be the problems that those coroners and those sheriffs were having with the Board of Commissioners in their county. And I never had that problem, and I certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Y'all head it to the Mexican restaurant to think about us up here. I know that this is gonna seem like a very long meeting. This time every year, I give the county's State of the County. Maybe a few minutes longer than usual, but I told them that the reason it's that long is because we have done a good bit this year, and we got to talk about it. But this time, I'm gonna give you the county's State of the County. Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Collins, Commissioner Clyde, Commissioner Tankersley, Clerk McKella, County Attorney Gracie, County Constitutional Officers, Department Heads, and my fellow Lincoln County. It gives me great pleasure, and I am honored, to present to you tonight my 33rd Annual State of the County. I would like to congratulate Commissioner Clyde and Commissioner Tankersley for being re-elected to the Board of Commissioners. Clerk of Court Amanda Doss, Coroner Tim Qualls, for another four-year term. I would also like to congratulate and welcome Sheriff Clay Smith, Judge Leighton Taylor, Tax Commissioner Linda Wilgus, on their successful elections to office to represent Lincoln County in their respective positions for the next four years. As you assume and take the responsibility, I want you to know that the Board of Commissioners, the clerk, who is also the Human Resources Director, and the county attorney are willing to help you in any way that we can. Tonight, as always, I want to recognize our Constitutional Officers, Department Heads, and county employees for your dedication in carrying out your duties to the citizens we serve. To our public safety personnel, I would like to commend you for providing our citizens and visitors with protection and safety, whether you are in law enforcement, emergency medical services, fire rescue, or E-911 Communications Office. I want you to know that you have the support of me and this board. Tonight, we welcome our new county attorney, who replaces longtime County Attorney Benjamin Jackson, who resigned December 31, 2024, to become the Associate Probate Judge Cheryl Gracie, a Lincoln County native, high school graduate, will become tonight Lincoln County's first female county attorney. Ms. Gracie, we look forward to working with you. I'm deviating a little bit, but if you haven't looked at the Lincoln Journal, it was a nice article on her in this week's Lincoln Journal. I suggest you look at it. The Department of Public Works Community Development under the directorship of Director Robbie Seymour, Director Stephanie Iker, performed 1,717 building inspections, issued 781 building permits, and 70 new residential permits that amounted $25,666,420. The average home built in Lincoln County in 2024 was $366,663. The average home built in Lincoln County in 2023 was $328,443. In comparison to the number of new residential permits where Lincoln was at 70, Macduffie in 2024 issued 64, Warren County issued 20, and Wilkes County issued 19. The Roads and Bridges Division resurfaced Overlook Road and Truluck Road at a cost of $402,827. $277,766 came from our LMEG Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, and $125,065 from our T-Splash. They also performed extensive patching in preparation for the resurfacing of numerous roads throughout the county. We plan to resurface the following roads that were approved but were not done last year. They are as follows: Reed Road, Lewis Family Road, Tabernacle Church Road, and Bethany Church Road, for a total of 11.10 miles at an approximately cost of $1 million that will be paid from the LMEG and the T-Splash funds. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, we will start the resurfacing of Chamberlain Ferry, Double Branches, Hart Ridge Town, Carvey Kennedy, and Monsieur Road. This project will cost $4,216,000 to resurface 18.9 miles of road. These road projects will be paid for by the county's T-Splash Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax. We also purchased a new Moore Max, which replaces the antiquated tractor-mounted boom axle at a cost of $238,226, and a new Ford three-and-a-half-ton pickup truck to be used by both the road and utilities department that cost $73,000, all paid for from our T-Splash and ARP American Rescue Plan funds. The Board of Commissioners approved an ordinance to govern solar farms and tiny homes in the unincorporated area of Lincoln County. The second and final reading on an ordinance concerning extreme noises throughout the county will be voted on later tonight in this meeting. Major improvements to the intersection of Ashmore-Barton Road and the Augusta Highway, known as Georgia Highway 47, has been approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation with a special funding of approximately $1.5 million from the Georgia Department of Transportation. This project should begin in the next 90 days. We have completed upgrades to Double Branches Water Treatment Facilities, which has been out of operation for eight months due to the updates of approximately $100,000. And that money was paid from the American Rescue Plan. Just a few days ago, January the 1st, the county's new contract for pickup and disposal of household garbage changes. Rowland Environmental is the new contractor after being awarded the bid by this board. If you have any questions concerning your pickup, you can view the county's website at www.lincolncountyga.gov, or call Public Works 706-359-5523. The Office of Emergency Services under the direction of Casey Broom, who is also the county emergency management director, and his team ought to be commended for their performance during Hurricane Elaine, which reached Category 4 status with winds up to 101 mile per hour in Lincoln County. Elaine was one of the, if not the worst storm to ever hit the southeastern United States with 42 trillion gallons of rain that fell. That would be equivalent to the flow of Niagara Falls for almost two years. The rain topped its level at 32.51 inches that fell in Jester Mountain, North Carolina. The northeast quadrant of the storm passed directly over Lincoln County in the early morning hours of September 27. Elaine caused 33 fatalities in Georgia, with one being in Lincoln County. 1.1 million Georgia residents were without power, including all of Lincoln County. The hurricane left many damaged homes and made much destroyed property throughout the county. The county contracted with Sears to clean up debris on all county rights away. We also contracted with Rosin for the monitoring, which was required by FEMA and GMA. The volume of pickup on county roads right away was 104,551 cubic yards. 3,867 loads were picked up and brought to the industrial park on Old Petersburg Road for chipping and removal from the site. The total cost of Lincoln County as of December 30, 2024 was $2,854,193. The Office of Emergency Services responded to 1,559 ambulance calls, averaging 4.3 calls per day, with an average dispatch to the scene of 7.82 minutes. Total fire calls for 2024 was 148. Capital purchases of EMS and fire include an auto plus CPR machine to replace the existing 17-year-old equipment at a cost of $66,000, and approved the purchase of a new ambulance at the cost of $230,000, which should be delivered, and we are expecting it by March of this year. We also made repairs and updated equipment on fire truck Engine 11 that is stationed at the substation on Highway 220 West at a cost of $50,000, and purchased Four Scott Air Packs at a cost of $37,000. We paid and received various grants for public safety in the amount of $40,000. E-911 Communications Department under Director Dawn Acock is staffed with eight communication officers and Director Acock, who sees the day-to-day operations of the department. In 2024, E-911 Communications purchased three new Telx radio consoles at a cost of This new equipment improved the quality of radio transmissions, thus improved the public safety response. E-911 went from two consoles to three in the communications center for the purpose of training and future growth within the department. It proved as an asset during Hurricane Elaine, when the center needed additional personnel to staff the center. The communications director and her staff worked tirelessly answering phone calls and questions to provide critical information to emergency responders and to the citizens of Lincoln County. We plan to make some renovations in the communications center during the year 2025. New signage has already been updated on the front and in front of the center located on School Street directly behind the courthouse. For the year 2024, E-911 received 3,583 911 calls. 11,643 administrative calls were received, for a total of 15,226 calls, averaging 42 calls per day. Of those calls, 8,824 were calls for service. The Recreation Department under Director Latrellis Clay partnered with Lincoln County Family Connection to again sponsor the summer youth camp during the months of June and July, serving approximately 50 youth between the ages of five and 12. They also held the fifth annual Christmas toy drive. Additionally, 250-plus youth participated in the baseball softball program. 165 youth participated in the soccer program. Pop Warner and Shell leaders had over 100 to participate, and 60 youth participated in the basketball program. Major renovations have begun to take place with upgrades to all five fields, and plans to replace the dugouts and press boxes at the lower baseball field. The East of Elam Field now has a press box for the 2025 season. A roof has been placed over the jumping pillar, and the playground has seen improvements, with some new playground equipment being added in the very near future. The walking track that circles the multipurpose field was recircusced in 2024. Pickleball has been very successful as well, with one outdoor court and two courts inside the gymnasium. On the grounds of the Kerry Carbon Recreation Complex, work has begun on the third phase of our Ag Arena. This arena has been a three-year project, moving forward as money's become available through state and federal grants. A staging facility at the arena will begin construction later this month, hopefully next week. The building will be at 80 by 100 foot and will house the animal. When completed, plans are to host animal shows, rodeos, concerts, and movies, as well as other activities. This entire facility has been funded with federal and state grants, and we would again, as the Board of Commissioners, like to thank Senator Lee Anderson and Representative Rob Leverett for their work in securing state grants, and to Congressman Rick Allen for his help with the United States Department of Agriculture with USDA grant. The Lincoln County Library, under the direction of Kerry Pardon, has proudly served over 10,000 patrons in 2024, both virtually and in person. The Dover Porridge Annex Room was used over 212 times during the year 2024, serving approximately 1,300 citizens for meetings, events, and classes. The summer reading program was very successful, with the biggest turnout ever, with over 500 youth participating and taking advantage of this program. Under Extension Director Robin Stewart, the University of Georgia Lincoln County Extension Office served 3,100 citizens who sought assistance from the Extension Office. 34 site visits were made. 117 samples were submitted to the University of Georgia Agricultural Laboratories through the Lincoln County Extension Office. The Agriculture and Natural Resources Program had 36 educational sessions, and 61 events and programs were conducted with 3,216 participants, representing international, national, state, and local audiences. The Lincoln County 4-H program had 325 4-H members. 21 Coa Club members were held in the school, with 30 additional opportunities such as Pioneer Day, Farm Safety Camp, Conservation Field Days, and other events attended by the club members. Five 4-Hs participated in the district projects at Rock Eagle. Director Stewart writes a weekly article for the local newspaper. The Lincoln County Ag Center was used over 20 and had over 25 events in 2024. The Technology and Media Services Department under Director Johnny Walton replaced 14-year-old servers that provided functions for critical county departments, such as Sheriff's Office, Clerk of Superior Court, and the probate court. Over 30 new cameras were added to enhance the security at county facilities, and all cameras were, all old cameras, were migrated to single enterprise camera system. We replaced the partial failing radio interface and dispatch to enhance public safety communications, and upgraded gear used for Lincoln County Red Devils radio and TV to improve audio during games and YouTube video. We extended the county network to the county library and the Double Branches Water Plant. Audio systems were installed in the Lincoln Center, the Ag Center, and the library. The director also assisted finance and adding credit card acceptance to the library and the convenience center. Director Delaney Deal was appointed by this Board of Commissioners and assumed the responsibility of leadership of the Lincoln County Department of Leisure Services in early 2024. The senior program provides meals and activities to the average of 35 participants four days a week. The seniors also enjoy a number of outings each year, some of which include trips to Lincoln County attractions, such as the Historical Park, Double Branches Farm, and local eating establishments. The seniors have also traveled to surrounding counties for movies and other adventures. The Lincoln County Senior Services Transit Division continues to provide services for citizens requiring dialysis treatments on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We transport dialysis patients to a total of four centers, two in Augusta and two in Taunton. Additionally, transit services for other medical appointments, shopping, and running errands are provided in Lincoln, Wilkes, Macduffie, Columbia, and Richmond Counties. Our transit services are available to all citizens of Lincoln County regardless of age or income. A list of fares for these trips can be found on the county's website. The Finance Department under Director Ernie Dawson will be presenting to this Board of Commissioners in the next few weeks with the results of a study approved by the board with the University of Georgia's Carl Benson Institute of Government. This was a classification and compensation study for the Lincoln County employees. If adopted by the Board of Commissioners, it will be used to design a competitive compensation plan for Lincoln County's consideration in future salary study. The Finance Department provided grant management for the following grants: workforce development, Family Connection, One Georgia for the Ag Arena, and the USDA grant for Ag Arena equipment. They completed mandatory reporting for USDA grants, ARP grants, One Georgia grants, DCA Hotel Motel Tax, Georgia Department of Audits and Budgets, Georgia Department of Audits Immigration Reporting, and Utility Bonds. Lincoln County FY '24 budget was $7,515,968. Lincoln County FY '25 budget is $8,354,776, which is an increase of $838,808, 11.6%. A few items that increased the budget from '24 to '25 include health insurance, $88,400; payroll, $318,000. payroll, $318,000. That's for raises that was given not to new employees; payroll taxes, $24,327; retirement, $134,614 due to the salary increases; liability insurance, $11,197. These five line items of our budget amounted to $569,588 of the $838,808 increase. Director Doss presented me with the year-end cash and cash equivalent reports. General Fund, $4,716,521. Splash, seven, best purpose local option sales tax, seven. Fund, $2,230,891. T-Splash Fund, $1,207,631. Solid Waste, $1,1979,159. American Rescue Plan, $374,499. Water Reserve Fund, $349,118. Emergency Fund, $309,631. Water Fund, $261,035. E-911 Fund, $111,575. Hotel Motel Tax, $82,468. Family Connection, $61,881. Drug Educational, $44,366. General Fund Reserve, $31,846. Opioid Settlement Fund, $16,172. Water Sinking Fund Number Two, $15,999. Law Library, $9,563. Jail Fee Fund, $8,607. Water Short-lived Asset Fund, $6,700. As a total of cash in the bank, December the 30th, 2024, $11,017,662. Our investment accounts, Raymond James 12-month CDs, $1,622,679. Raymond James Exchange Savings, $534,375. For a total of cash equivalents in the investment fund of $2,157,054, for a total of $13,174,716. I'm proud to announce that Lincoln County finances are strong and in excellent condition. Once again, I am honored to serve as your chairman. As we work together, we can make Lincoln County a place that we all enjoy and call home. May God bless each of you, and may God continue to bless this great county. Okay, we're gonna move on now. Put your seatbelts on. Item six is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion that we approve the minutes that sent to you?
We're moving, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tinkley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? There is none? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. The approval of the agenda, item seven. I would like to ask that we remove item 18, 19, and 20 to next month. Without objection, Madam Clerk, we're going to remove that and ask you to place it on the February agenda.
Yes, sir.
Item eight is the appointment.
Excuse me. We need to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion, that's second.
That's second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion of the approval of the agenda? There is none? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Now, we're going to item eight. This is every two-year appointments, because the county commission could change every two years, three run one year and two run the next. So, January of odd number of years, we appoint the clerk. Is there a motion that we reappoint Clerk Sharon McKellar for a two-year term as clerk to the county commission?
We're moving, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tinkley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion? There is none? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. The next appointment, nine, is the county attorney. I think she just came on board. We need to do this to keep the record straight, and when we do it, is there a motion that we appoint Ms. Sheriff Grace's county attorney?
We're moving, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tinkley. Any discussion on the motion? There is none? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Next is the appointment of a vice chairman. This rotates normally on a two-year deal. Commissioner Henderson has served as the vice chairman for the last two years. I think somebody wanted to, Commissioner Tinkley has not served that. Is it any objection to Commissioner Tinkley's name being submitted to serve as vice chairman?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Chair, here is no objection. Motion made by Commissioner Clyde is asked second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? That should take a lot of time for this. But the chair hears none? All in favor of the motion, Commissioner Tinkley, to serve as the vice chairman, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Commissioner Tinkley, I don't think I'm gonna be at the February meeting, so you need to be getting ready, giving you plenty of one. I don't miss many, but I'm gonna probably miss out on them. Item 11 is the appointment of department heads. We got that somewhere in here. I do. We will, we, huh? We have our nine department heads that I'm going to read off, and without objection, I would submit that we reappoint the current department heads. They are Community Development Director Stephanie Iker, E-911 Director Dawn Akok, Emergency Services Director Casey Broom, Finance Director Ernie Doss, Leisure Services Director Delaney Deal, Library Director Kerry Pardon, Public Works Director Robbie Seymour, Recreation Director Latrellis Glaze, Technology and Media Service Director Johnny Walton. Is there, out of objection, is there a motion that we reappoint these nine people to the positions they hold?
We're moving, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion? There is none? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, and the motion's carried. Thankfully, to the voters of Lincoln County, our commission didn't change this time, so we have four standing committees as created by county ordinance. These committees are appointed by the chairman, and I would like to leave them as they were, and that would be Finance Committee, Commissioner Collins, chairman with Commissioner Clyde. Recreation Committee, chairman is Commissioner Henderson with Commissioner Tinkley. Public Works Committee is Commissioner Clyde with Commissioner Henderson. General Government Committee is Commissioner Tinkley as chairman, Commissioner Clyde's Public Works Commission as chairman. Tinkley would serve as chairman of the General Government Committee along with Commissioner Clyde. So, that is who I will be appointing as our committee leaders for the next two years. Okay, we are down to item 13, departmental reports. 13A is the Office of Emergency Services Director Broom, and I think he will be giving you a update on what we expect maybe tomorrow.
Chairman, thank you, Commissioner. You have my submitted reports. First, I reckon I'll take any questions related to those that you might have.
Okay, any questions, Director Broom? When he stopped, I knew that's what I was supposed to do, because I sure can hear.
I apologize, Chairman. I'm getting as close to this thing as I can.
I don't know whether you got into microphone or he turned you up, but I heard you leave. Okay, no questions to Director Broom? You want to give a report?
I will. I'll give a brief synopsis. We've been in various levels of briefings pretty much all week. We've had met department heads with the chairman a couple of times and made a lot of preparation. We've, of course, checked all our needed equipment, fuel generators, tested them. We've also told our essential staff we're gonna possibly need them. We are putting some sand on the road tomorrow, Director Seymour told me. Also, as far, I made a Code Red announcement earlier this afternoon. Many of you may have gotten it. It kind of outlined some of the same stuff. In the most recent briefing, which was at, it was a single pager or what they call a one pager, basically remained the same. The biggest change we've seen this week is the time period that the winter weather may arrive. Initially, they were saying sometime around 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. That has shifted towards the evening more. We look for any impacts to become evident mid-afternoon to evening and through the night. One of my largest concerns is the threat of freezing rain. As we all know, freezing rain is later, a little bit, or quite different, actually. When you have rain that hits the ground and then freezes, or accumulates on tree branches, power lines, and stuff like that on the roadway, and then freezes, it forms a solid sheet of ice. The predictions vary widely for the amount of ice we might see, but I asked several people today, what's the difference between one-third of an inch of ice and two-thirds of an inch of ice? None. They're both very slippery and dangerous. So, we're hoping to avoid power outages and car wrecks and things like that. The best thing we can do to protect ourselves is to stay at home during those hours when things are freezing and shelter in place, if you will, and not travel unless you absolutely have to. I don't think I gave you more than you wanted already, Chairman.
Okay, I appreciate it, and we do encourage everyone, and I know some will be watching this video, watch the county's website and Facebook. I understand, I don't read it, but I understand a lot of people think we offer to beat some way, and we not doing any of things. Just heard of a lot of what we doing, but we are keeping people updated on the website and the Facebook more than once a day as new information comes in. And Director Broom is also going on Code Red. I think we have six or seven thousand people subscribe to Code Red, and he goes on Code Red. I heard it this afternoon, and he'll be doing that again sometime in the morning. So, we're trying to keep everybody updated as to what is going to happen. Sheriff Smith met with us in this morning. He's involved in it and helping us with it. So, everybody drive careful. Hopefully, it's not gonna be as bad as it could be, but we didn't think Helene was gonna be this bad either. So, we are all prepared for whatever the Lord sends us tomorrow. Thank you, Director Broom. Any question to him? Recreation Director Glaze is at the Recreation Complex. Basketball, I think, has started or something. Anyway, he's said he'd be out there. Finance Director Doss.
Chairman, Commissioners, I have sent you the audit final report, and the chairman has given my monthly report, so Chairman, I am finished. If you have no questions.
Any questions to Director Doss? Okay, we'll move on to item 13D, Director Seymour.
Chairman, members of the board, I've submitted my written reports. I don't have anything to add to those, unless you have some questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions to Director Seymour?
Mr. Chairman, I got a few.
Mr. Henderson.
Have we gotten the generators installed at the wells and stuff yet?
They are not. They have not come in. I think there was a lead time, and Director Doss may be able to help with that a little bit better than me, but I do know that they are anticipated to be in stock in March. So, we're waiting on those generators to come in. Everything on our side is done. We're just waiting.
I thought they'd been delayed longer than that. Am I right? Or wrong?
I thought it was March.
So, Chairman, the four generators for the water system, those are due in in February and March. Those are the ones that we ordered, but the lead time on some of the other ones that we talked about were 30 to 40 months, I mean, 30, 30 to 40 weeks. But the ones we ordered, I talked to Mr. Kirkland over the weekend at church, and they're expecting everything in between February and should have them all installed in March.
That's for the four-well system.
The four-well system, yes, sir.
Hopefully by March.
Correct.
I don't know what the difference is. I had no trouble hearing him, but this one and this one, I'm having trouble. I don't know if y'all have the same trouble I have. Not my hearing, eh, don't worry. Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to number 14, which is something seems like we're dealing with all year noise audits. This is the second reading, and I'll ask the clerk, I mean, county attorney, if she'll start the second reading of the audits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This ordinance was updated by Mr. Jackson, and the first reading was in December. If I may start the second reading.
Proceed.
Section 50-101, definitions. Section A, unreasonable disturbance and excessive noise means if a person of normal hearing who is inside a residence, which is not the location of the source of the noise, can one, clearly hear the noise, two, distinguish the noise from the background ambient noise, and three, ascertain and identify the nature and source of the noise. Section B, duly authorized officer shall mean the Lincoln County Sheriff, any Lincoln County Deputy Sheriff, or any Lincoln County code enforcement officer. Prohibited noise, section 50.
Attorney Grayson.
Yes, sir.
Without objection from a member of the board, I would ask that we suspend the reading of this second reading of the audit, ordinance. It's been on the website for a good while. I think we go ahead and call it to a vote. We talked about it a good bit, talked about it last week in the work session. I'm gonna ask for a motion that we approve the second reading and enact into law dis- ordinance. Is there a motion?
We're moving, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tinkley, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion on the noise? This is a part of the disorderly conduct ordinance, so it will be in that section. For Mr. Clyde.
No motion.
Oh, I thought I saw your hand go up. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Item 15 is the abandonment of Armithia Church Road. Attorney Grayson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Frye has requested that the first portion of Armithia Road be abandoned. There is an appraised value by Mr. Adair, and Mr. Jackson prepared the quick claim deed that was reviewed at the work session.
Okay, I think we know all about this. It's been bounced around Mars and back. Looks like Mr. Frye is here. We've discussed this a good bit, and we'll get to discussing, if y'all want to discuss it, we will discuss it, but I'm gonna move, I'm gonna call it for a vote. And I think we got to have two motions. We're gonna need a motion to abandon the road, and we are going to need a motion to sell the road. We have came up, we had tax assistance officers do this, so the selling price of this is what we discussed, is $2,656. I think first we need to vote to abandon it before we do the selling of it. Is there a motion that we abandon this portion, which includes all of Armithia Church Road?
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde is asked second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
I'm telling you what, y'all must have got ballgame coming on a little bit. I have a motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Tinkley on the abandonment of Armithia Church Road. There's no discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Just for the record, this has been run in the newspaper and followed all the procedures that it taken to do. It's our motion that we sell this property to the adjoining landowners. He's the only landowner that adjoins it. Where the roads are closing, that could put his property all back together. Yes, the dirt road is very seldom ever used, if any other than by the property owners, and now he's the property owner. The amount, two thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars, is our motion.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Our motion is our second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. And I think you'll have the deed up, Ms. Grayson.
Yes, sir.
I guess that's when it'll pass. Give me the deed, Mr.-
Chairman, I just ended to the clerk, and the Grayson will be reviewed, because I increased the pay rate to what Mr. Adair came up with.
That ends up being two point two one acres now, right?
Yes, sir. So, the clerk has all paid for pounds, so the Grayson will review that.
Okay. So, in other words, what she's saying is you turned it over, and you threw it at her, but she better pick it up. Is that what, is that what you said?
God bless her.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Appreciate it.
What I wanna do now is see you go down there and build y'all a house now. Right next to you, I can talk about it. We do appreciate you. John, he's a former commissioner. He was commissioned up until just a few months ago in Crawford Fields, Indiana. And I don't know what brought him to the great state of Georgia. I think maybe I can, I think maybe I can see why. Anyway, we appreciate you. We feel like we know each other real well now after all these months, and we look forward to seeing you around, things going on here. We appreciate both of you. Welcome to Lincoln County Joy. Thank you. All right, that finish that? Alcohol license number sixteen, Clark McKellen.
Yes, sir. Xavier Banks, Commander of American Legion Post five nine seven, has not met on his requirements.
Okay, what she's saying, she's, she sounds like she's getting the crew. The commander has not gotten his background check and some other things that allowed us to be able to, did it run into paper? And it hadn't ran into paper like it's supposed to be done, so I think what we'll do is just postpone this one. Is that what we need to?
Yes, sir, to February.
Let's postpone this one to the February meeting. Any objections to that? Okay, item seventeen is Narcan AED station. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Chairman, Commissioners, we discussed that link, the project that was proposed in the work session. Very briefly, I'll give a description of the save stations, the Narcan AED save stations. These basically are public boxes that contain a, two doses required by state law of Narcan, which is an antidote to opioid poisonings, as well as an AED, an automated external defibrillator. I call it AED all the time. I forget what the acronym means sometimes. These are two items that are vital to the survival in different situations, opioid overdose or sudden cardiac arrest. These are nice stations. There's one here in the courthouse now. We're proposing fourteen county buildings with additional four at this point, outside units at the complex, at the Terry Coben Complex. We had a couple of quotes that we brought to the meeting to give an idea of what each individual type box cost. The bottom line is not complete. We would like tonight to pursue approval to use the opioid funds, which have a very narrow category of use. We can use it for training, and we can use it for the purchase of these Narcan AED save stations. So, we're gonna ask that you give us approval to use up to the balance of that fund, which is sixty, right at sixty-four thousand dollars, to affect this project. That way, when, we know we're gonna have to have some electrical work done. We know we're gonna have to give training to every department, every building, the staff, and there'll be costs associated with those. We will not use any money outside of the opioid money that's designated for this type of project. Any questions?
Okay, just right, we, this is a settlement that we joined in several years ago in a class action suit. We were successful, and I think I thought I was, what are we, sixty-four, sixty-six thousand?
Chairman, it's approximately sixty-six thousand. We want to come in a little short on this project.
So, sixty-six is up to?
Approximately sixty-six thousand is what we have in the fund, but we're not wanting to go all the way. That's why-
Okay, I got you. I got you. That's why you want sixty-four thousand.
I could spend the rest of it, Chairman.
Okay, I understand. I just want the public to know that this is not County General Fund tax dollars. This is done for a lawsuit that we the recipient of this amount of money. And as he said, in window's narrow, this is basically about all we could figure out we could do to use it. But I think it would be good to be in these public buildings. It's our motion that we allow them to spend up to sixty-four thousand dollars of this opioid money that the county received. It's our motion.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Now, the motion is our second. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tankly. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Clyde.
I've got one comment, I think. Didn't you tell us that this pit would misuse, somebody grabbing and pulling the alarm or whatever, and open the box?
Yes, sir, you're ruining my fun. I was waiting for the first person that went over there and popped that door open. The outdoor stations have automatic notification through cell technology. When the door is opened, nine-one-one is notified, and anyone in a list of users who's authorized to get that notification. It also has a camera inside that's gonna take multiple photographs of whoever opens the door and removes the AED or the Narcan from the box. So, anyone who has ideas of visiting these save stations and playing with items inside will know immediately, and law enforcement response times to the complex are very short.
Thanks, sir.
Any other question? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Item number eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, we have deferred them to the February meeting, so they are not on. We'll go to item twenty-one, is unsafe building ordinance text change. Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Under section nineteen, I mean eighteen dash nine, which is unsafe buildings of official code of Lincoln County, I am proposing a text change to that code. It's a very short code, but the third Senate C N says all such buildings located in R-1, R-2, R-3, and A-3 zones are hereby declared illegal. We would like to change that text to say that all such buildings located in all zoning districts are hereby declared illegal. So, it'd be a text change that you could approve tonight, and it would take effect tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we familiar with this one, too, as we discussed at the work session. It's our motion that we approve the text change that's presented to us on section eighteen dash nine of unsafe buildings, county ordinance.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Hand me the phone, I'll call Commissioner Collins, see if I can get a second. That's second.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Tankly. Any discussion? Chair, is none? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, the motion is carried. Item twenty-two, we are down to board appointments. Let's see how many of us are ready. Selective Service Board, we talked about this. Mr. Ernie Guthrie resigned. Mr. Eric Kinnearly.
Kinnearly.
Kinnearly, who is the commander. I know him well, I didn't know how to pronounce his name. He's commander of the American Legion and was retired serviceman. Represent us on the Selective Service Board. Is there any other, commission's got anybody else that they would like to present a name to? If not, it's our motion that we appoint Mr. Kinnearly to the Selective Service Board.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankly, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Tax assessors, Ms. Berg's term expired at the end of the year. These are five-year terms, I think, on the Board of Tax Assessors. Ms. Berg was my appointment. It says at large, but at large, it's me on the five member boards. I've recommended that she be reappointed to the Tax Assessors Board. She's been to school, she's up with the schooling. We don't have to start that process back over, but I need a motion.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Tax Assessors Board, same way, Mr. Baloo has resigned. He has an unexpired term that's left of about a year or two. Is that right?
One year.
One year. That is, that is an appointment by Commissioner Clyde. Commissioner Clyde, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I do.
Would you present?
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Baloo for filling in and doing a good job for us and everything. And Mr. Brent Weir has agreed to that. His son's outstanding golfer for our high school team, by the way. And Mr. Weir's the gentleman that runs Yohee, Heath and Plum, and for us, a businessman that-
Is that W E I R?
A lot of, W E I R. And I give, share the information on his address and all that stuff, cell number, the recent number.
All right, the recommendation is a motion by Commissioner Clyde to appoint Brent Weir to the Board of Tax Assessors to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Baloo. It's our second.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, I mean Clyde, second by Commissioner Tankly. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Development Authority Board, Commissioner Henderson. You have, are you prepared tonight for one of them?
No, sir, I'm not.
Okay, we'll defer this one. Development Authority Board, Mr. Joe Jackson, Commissioner Clyde.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Joe Jackson has agreed to keep continuing that job if we'll permit him to, and I make the motion we do.
Okay, you got a motion, recommendation, motion by Commissioner Clyde. It's our second.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Tankly. Any discussion on the motion for Mr. Jackson to remain on the Development Authority Board? Chair, is none? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign. Mr. Bo Reed's term expired. That's Commissioner Tankly. Commissioner Tankly.
I've talked to Mr. Reed, and he has agreed to another term, so he is my appointee.
Okay, we have a recommendation and a motion by Commissioner Tankly to reappoint Bo Reed to the Development Authority Board for another four-year term. That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Tankly, second by Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Mr. John Sprattlin's term expired on the Development Authority, twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. That is a board appointment. That's not my appointment. It's that large board appointment, and Mr. Johnny has agreed to serve if someone will make a motion that we reappoint him, or have a motion for somebody else.
I made the motion to reappoint John-
Have a motion by Commissioner Clyde to reappoint Mr. Sprattlin to the Board. It's our second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. The expired term of Ms. Mason, that is an at-large seat by the Board, but the Board's not ready to make an appointment to that one. We'll defer that to a later date, but we have the Elections Board, if there's not any objection. We have another board member, Ms. Brenda Leopard. Her term expired at the end of the year, because these, I think, I think they carry over till we reappoint her, but she has agreed to serve another term on the Board of Elections. And without objection, I'd like to submit her name unless you have somebody else. If not, I entertain a motion.
I made a motion, Mr. Chairman.
You got a motion, it's our second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. Ms. Kay Light's term is expired on the Library Board. She represents District Three, by Commissioner Clyde. Mr. Clyde, do you have a recommendation?
No, sir, I'll have to wait next month to finish that one.
Okay, we will move that one to February. Y'all keep on, it has to come to the February meeting. Library Board, Mr. Larry Putson, his term expired, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. He represents District Four. He's appointed by Commissioner Tankly. Commissioner Tankly, do you have a recommendation?
Recommendation is to reappoint Mr. Larry Putson.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tankly to appoint, reappoint Mr. Putson back to a term on the Library Board. It's our second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Tankly, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, is none? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. Planning and zoning Board, we have Mr. Tim Madison. He has served on that Board for a long time. He is my appointee, and I have talked to him, and he is willing to serve another term on the Board. So, I would recommend that he be reappointed to a term as to the planning and zoning Board. It's our motion or objection? I entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
That's second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankly, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion of Tim Madison? Chair, is none? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motions carried. We have an appointment to the planning and zoning Board, term expired December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. District One, Commissioner Henderson, Lachlan Ellis's term. Do you have a recommendation, or you-
I do not. I haven't, I haven't, I wasn't paying attention, and I haven't asked her if she's interested in staying.
You want to wait in February on that?
Probably would be the best.
All right, you heard it, he would bring that one back at the February meeting. I think that concluded all around, no? Yeah, that got them all, didn't it?
Yes, sir.
Well, you're getting, you're getting worse over there. Before we go to item number twenty-three, which is the adjournment, I meant to say this at the beginning, but you notice to see to my left, Commissioner Collins is not here. He was here Monday. It's wearing ear ceremony, and he got sick that night. He had pneumonia. He was taken to the hospital Monday night by his wife in the car, not able. He is still in the hospital. He's doing good. I talked to him today, but he'll probably be in the hospital another couple of days to get his, get his oxygen levels back up. So, let's remember, Commissioner Collins, in our prayers, and hope that he gets home by the weekend. That's what he's wanting to do, and I understand that the sheriff is having to go over a couple of times a day to make sure he stays in the bed and does what he's supposed to do, and that he's eating healthy, and he's not playing in the playroom too long at one time. Let's remember that. Any other, it's our motion that we adjourn.
I so move.
Ooh, second.
Second.
Boy, that was quick. Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson to adjourn. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn? Chair, is none? All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion, we adjourn.